I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Commissioner Archer and Commissioner Cook.
Good morning, morning.
And good morning, everyone, and welcome to our March 10th meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Madam Clerk, the first item, please.
First item is Item One, Proclamation of Presentations. Presentation by Topeka Civic Theater and Academy regarding the accomplishments of the operation of the Helen Hawker Theater and associated programs. Parks and Recreation.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Knight, Parks and Recreation. This is a kind of a presentation of one of our key partnerships that we began shortly after the departments merged. I would like to have Randy Louie come up here from Parks and Recreation. He's a, Randy Louie, the deputy director, he has been key in getting this program up and running, and he'd like to introduce the people from the Topeka Civic Theater and Academy to make the presentation.
There you go.
Good morning, Commissioners. Randy Louie, Parks and Rec. As John mentioned, I feel this is one of our most successful partnerships, and we've got several. We're going to talk about another one later in the commission meeting, but when this partnership began with taking over or operating Helen Hawker Theater, there was some questionable decision whether this was the right move, but I think over time it has proved that it's been a great move. They were down and we renewed their contract in December for another three years, and as part of that contract, the budgeted money that they receive, if they don't spend, they return back to us, and that's what we're here today to talk about. I'd like to introduce Shawn Leisinger. And I, Vicki, will you come up, or do I?
Yeah.
And they have a little check for you.
Shawn Leisinger, Chair of the Board for Topeka Civic Theater. Yes, we like big checks. We brought you a big check. To use kind of a Parks and Rec metaphor, in the bowling world, if you bowl three strikes, it's a turkey, we bring you a turkey today. Three years in a row, we brought you money back. This year, we are bringing you back. We'll see it here.
Sorry.
Nineteen thousand, eighty-one dollars and eighteen cents of taxpayer money coming back.
Very good. Very good. Thank you.
It's largely responsible, largely due to the fact that Joanna has been running a wonderful program over there, along with her other staff. In that new three-year contract that we have, so folks don't think we're kind of on a roll here, we're getting closer and closer to what we're trying to spend over there, so hopefully we'll come in with even lower expenses and continue bringing checks back each year.
Sure. Thanks for being good stewards of the taxpayers' money. We appreciate it, and I know they do, too. So, you can hand that check off to Betty, probably.
I think she got the little one. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Item Three, Consent Agenda.
Are there questions on the consent agenda?
I would move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
It's a motion by Commissioner Cook.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor of the motion say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item Four, New Business. A, County Clerk, number one, consider all voucher payments.
Madam Chair, this morning, we have one voucher report dated March 19th, 2016, the total amount of seven hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred five dollars and seventy-three cents. The one significant item on the voucher report is holding for Department of Revenue at approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the rest is being spread pretty much over the other operating areas. Review the vouchers, have all my questions answered, and make a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you. Are there questions?
I would second the request to approve the vouchers.
Motion by Commissioner Archer, second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor of the motion say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Thank you.
Item A two, Consider Correction Orders.
I move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item B, Health Agency, number one, Consider Authorization and Execution of Contract C-65-2016 with KDHE for additional funding of thirty thousand dollars for the Community Health Center due to the closing of the Marion Clinic and transfer of patients to the CHC for services.
Good morning, Commissioners. Alice Weingartner, Health Agency. We were informed by the State Health Department that with the closing of the Marion Clinic, they were a recipient of State Primary Care Grant Funds, and so because of their closing and us seeing an increase in the number of patients, they're reallocating some of those state fiscal year 2016 grant funds to us for this year. And then we've also been instructed to increase what's called our base level funding with that same amount for the fiscal year 2017, and that is going to be reflected in the grant that's the next agenda item. So, if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Alice. I do not have any questions on the approval of the contract, but there is a question.
Thank you. When we do the merger, anticipated merger with Grace Med later this year, will these monies continue to flow over?
Yes, that is the intent, and I can tell you, based on a preliminary conversation that I've had, we would still, as a county, under Grace Med, still be applying for those funds specific for Shawnee County. So, the answer is yes.
Okay. Given that we're doing the merger halfway through the year, just to make sure that we do have these funds available for the.
Correct. And we've had ongoing communications with the state, so they're well aware of what's taking place here and what we're trying to do. So, the other thing I will add, just as a point of information, is there are about three hundred and fifty patients from Marion Clinic who, when they ended their medical care services, we know that about fifty of those patients have gone to private practice providers in our community, and the other three hundred, we continue to work on trying to bring them in either to our services or they'll identify with somebody else. Since January, we've probably had close to eighty patients who have already come in and established care, and we've sent out well over a hundred new patient packets as well. So, it's going to be just one of those ongoing things as we see those new patients get brought into our primary care setting.
Thank you. Questions?
I was just going to say, hopefully Commissioner Cook is right, and we are going to make the transition July 1st, which begs the question, have we heard anything from Washington?
I have not screamed out loud yet, so no, we have not.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Beeler is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you.
Item B two, Consider Approval of Request to Apply for the Kansas Department of Health and Environment's Aid to Local Grants for the State Fiscal Year 2017. In a total grant amount of one million, two hundred forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ed Kalas with the Health Agency. The request before you is to apply for the aid to local grants that we typically receive from the Department of Health and Environment of the state every year, and I'm here to answer any of the questions that you might have.
Thanks, Ed. Questions?
Move to approve the request.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Archer, second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Thank you, Ed.
Item C, Information Technology. Number one, Consider Authorization and Execution of Contract C-66-2016. Amendment to Contract C-422-2013 with Computer Information Concepts for Creation of Custom Software Code to Add Functionality to the Tax Administration Solution at a Cost of nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pat O'Blender with the Information Technology Department. This item, as mentioned in the memo, is an addendum to the existing contract with CIC, the company that provides our ERP system, or our tax administration system. What we're asking for is some custom code be developed by CIC that would allow us, Shawnee County, to display information regarding specials, the amounts of money that people pay on properties for enhancements to their properties that were provided as part of the initial setup of the location. Right now, we do not have that information data displayed on our webpage, so the public can't get to our webpage and see specials information and payoff amounts and projected payments. We would like to put that back on our website. We used to be able to get it off of the mainframe, but when we retired the mainframe, we dropped the stitch, and we didn't get this piece accounted for. This piece of custom coding would get that taken care of. It would restore that functionality that we had before we transitioned from the mainframe to CIC. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thanks, Ed. Are there questions on this item?
I move approval.
Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Cook.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item C two, Consider Authorization and Execution of Contract C-67-2016 with Cox Business for Cable Television Service in Various County Offices at a Cost of fourteen dollars per month per television.
Pat O'Blender again with the Information Technology Department. This item is what we're referring to as a master contract for Shawnee County to use to consolidate all of the charges for television, basically the whole television service is being provided by Cox. We have a lot of different departments scattered in a lot of different buildings, and we were heading down the path of setting up individual contracts for all those locations, which vary in terms of service and links to contracts, et cetera. In order to consolidate and make things consistent and understandable and easily trackable and get charges to the right people, we're putting together this master contract that would put everything in one pot, so to speak, so that anybody that has need for cable TV services in their location would be able to add to this contract those that aren't already included. Later, as they are added, we could add them to this existing contract, just to get things consistent and straightforward. The IT department would take responsibility for tracking how many we have, what the bill is per month, and then getting that distributed out to departments that are using these services through the audit finance office, so that everybody's paying for the services that they're consuming. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Ed. Are there questions?
Move to approve the contract.
Second.
So, motion by Commissioner Archer, second by Commissioner Cook. I will say thank you. I know this took some time to get all ironed out, but I appreciate your efforts. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item D, Elections. Number one, Consider Authorization and Execution of Contract C-68-2016 with Election Systems and Software for the Purchase of New Equipment and Any Related Items at a Cost of one million, seven hundred forty-nine thousand, fifty-two dollars and sixty-five cents.
Good morning, Commissioners. Andrew Howell, Shawnee County Election Commissioner. What we have here is a contract that we've worked on for some time. We'd like approval, and I'll just go through kind of how we've gotten here and go through some of the details and the, kind of, basically the storyline of what's happened and how we've gotten here. This contract is for one point seven million and change, and this has gone through a comprehensive RFP process. As you know, our existing voting equipment, some of it is over twenty years old, continues to fail on multiple levels. We cannot run a presidential election with it. It's causing numerous delays, lack of predictability, and inability to report our election results timely. Also, on Election Day, we're usually plagued by numerous electronic media failures. Our Jim software server is actually hosted on an XP version, which Microsoft no longer supports, and even that server itself, we've replaced multiple parts many times, so we're out of time on the existing equipment. In 2015, September 16, we issued the RFP 15-0078 for a new equipment and voting system. That's the scanners, the software, the kind of the whole package, because it all comes together. Six proposals received were received by us, and the four counties went together on this joint RFP, because we thought we would get a better price, we thought we'd have more leverage. In effect, what we've done is leveraged our ability for any of those vendors to effectively have the potential for a statewide contract. So, I'm really happy that we've done that. Working with those other counties has been helpful. It helped us to make, I think, better decisions and get better leverage. Each of the counties is responsible for their final evaluation of the proposals. During this process, Shawnee County Election Office did solicit public input regarding new equipment, and we've incorporated those opinions and that input into the selection that's represented here today. I'll just go down through the list of things that we received from the public, so you kind of know what the public told us over our six different meetings was important to them. The number one issue in Shawnee County that was important to people that we heard most consistently, both from the lead women voters, as well as just regular voters and people involved, was that they were concerned that we had a voter-verified paper audit trail or a paper-based way to verify without wondering, are votes being stored on a hard drive, and how do you know that they're getting law? I mean, those kinds of questions, as you've read about them in the media article, they matter a lot to me as well. So, I'm happy to tell you that we have taken that into consideration. There will be a piece of paper that you can get your hands on for every voter and for every ballot cast. So, I think that's really critical, that the public understand that, and I think it brings a new level of accountability to the process. Number one. Number two is ease of use, ability to quickly and easily set the equipment up, prevent long lines early in the day, ease of training of staff and board workers and voters, and a voter wait time of less than thirty minutes for voters are our goal. Now, the one thing I will qualify is, on a presidential election, if everybody in the neighborhood of a precinct that has fifteen hundred people shows up at the same time, which I really can't prevent, it could happen that there'll be a longer wait time than that. But that's our goal. That's our stated goal, and the way that we've come to the numbers that we have is that we believe that ninety-five percent of the time, we can achieve this, and that's our goal. So, again, that's also important to people. That's one of the comments that we heard from people was, keep those wait times as low as possible. And like I said, we did have numerous other meetings with various interested parties throughout this process. Other miscellaneous equipment, which will be needed, is not included in this, so we expect to come back with a few more smaller purchases in the next couple of months, but we need to get this contract behind us so we can kind of help make those other final decisions. Additional pull pads, some rolling carts, miscellaneous small items. I would just say, it's taken us a little longer than we wanted to to get to this point, but this last couple of months, we've been actually doing some final negotiations with the vendors. We've saved over forty thousand dollars as a result of those final negotiations, so it's taken some time, but I believe it was worth it. We've also got some additional customizations at no cost to the county that are going to be very helpful in the long run. The other thing I would tell you is, we're well under budget with this. I think our process has served us well. And additionally, there is a component of the contract that says that Shawnee County will receive future rebates as more and more counties across the state begin to use the particular vendor's equipment. So, there's actually, I think we've made a good selection, but there's also future benefit for Shawnee County as well for having down through this process. I want to say a thank you, and we appreciate the assistance of the Counselor's Office. Betty's been very helpful. IT, patent mark, have been very helpful, and numerous county departments have been involved in this. I think the Counselors probably got tired of us sending revisions and amendments back and forth, but we felt like we needed to. We do plan to have a media day. We do plan to have a public open house to let the public truly get their hands on and understand and see and touch and feel these things coming up as soon as possible. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to stand for those.
Questions? Comments? Commissioner Cook?
Madam Chair, thank you. Commissioner Howell, you listed a litany of issues with the existing equipment and why it needs to be replaced at the beginning of your presentation, but you're not calling into question any of the prior elections, it's just noting that we've reached the end of life for this equipment.
We've definitely reached the end of life. The one thing, you know, I have not been happy with our reporting of the results, but the reason that we have not been able to report early is, we go through a very specific list, and if there's any question with any of the equipment, we'll verify it with that same board that ran the election during the day, and if we need to count it twice, we'll count it twice. And so, that's what's happened to us, is we've had to take some extra steps in these last couple of elections, just to verify everything one last time, and that's why our reporting has taken longer than we all wanted to, but when you're using equipment that you have to really be careful with. No, I'm not. I'm very confident that our results are correct, but like I said, it takes extra time, and I don't want to get to the point that that actually is the result.
I just want to make sure we're clear on that, that there's no question about past elections, we're just making sure that the future elections are more verifiable.
Correct.
Good to know. Commissioner Archer, did you have anything?
I just wanted to compliment Andrew and his staff for doing a good job in bringing the project in under budget. This is something we had to do. This is money we had to spend, and it's always nice to report out that we have value and did a good job and we spent taxpayer money, so I just wanted to compliment. And make a motion to approve the contract.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve by Commissioner Archer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook. I will just note, when you have that public event at the election office, it might show the difference between not the most recent equipment, but much older equipment, and how far we have come. But new election building, new election equipment.
Certainly. No, we can do that.
It's a good, this is a good day, and we've been waiting for this piece of it for a while, so, yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before we let Andrew go, Andrew, earlier before the meeting, you let me know that you've got a program you've been working with through your department with high school students.
Correct.
Can you take just a quick moment and?
Certainly. Jay in our office is actually working with a number of high school students and high school teachers, and we're going to do basically a registration information day with high schools throughout the county. And we haven't quite got that finalized, we're still working on some of those details, but we want to make sure that those government classes and those students that are interested, if they want to come by, we'll put on a presentation, make sure they understand the registration process and the requirements, and help them through that as much as we possibly can early on.
That's great. Good.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item E, Parks and Recreation. Number one, Consider Authorization and Execution of Contract C-69-2016 with the Topeka Golden Giants to Conduct Collegiate Age Baseball Competitions on the Pony Field at Betis Family Sports Complex with Compensation of two hundred and eighty-five dollars per game for the field rental.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Knight, Parks and Recreation. Many of the items over the last year or so that I've brought up here in front of the Commissioners have addressed how this fits into the master plan. You're starting to see now how some of the results of these are actually affecting on the ground, the differences in Parks and Recreation and how it affects Shawnee County. I want to, in two different ways. Susan Hensler is here, who was key in helping develop the cost recovery policy, was helped us to begin to set these different fees for these type of programs, in which then Parks and Recreation, county commissioners aren't in the situation of picking winners or losers, who gets the best deal rates, those type of things. We're having all of these, all of these groups are paying what it costs the Shawnee County taxpayers to, what the true cost of recovering those are. Another key thing is, we recently had some reorganization going on. Key in getting this negotiate, this contract negotiated is Darren Tolan, who is back there, our new sports supervisor. He's been working closely with them, the Pecos League that's coming in. We have two large fields at the Betis Sports Complex, one that fits, is designed to fit the dimensions of Major League Baseball, professional baseball standards, but we also have another one that meets collegiate level, and so we have room at the Betis Sports Complex for both this group and the Pecos League, and Darren's been key in working that out into which they could both be their employee. That being said, he is here, and Darren is here, and be glad to answer any specific question you may have, but this is a contract with Golden Giants to lay out at Lake Shawnee this summer. Again.
Thank you, John. Questions? Commissioner Cook?
John, thank you for mentioning the Pecos League, but we also have, as we did two weeks ago, the USSSA?
U triple S A, three S's, yes.
Right. And then we, so they're also at Betis, and we have youth leagues at Betis as well.
Yes, sir.
So, when we put in Betis, or I guess Commissioner Beeler, when you put in Betis, there was a concern about whether or not it was going to see enough play to justify the cost. And so, this is just another example of the Parks and Rec Department making sure that it's being used to its fullest potential. So, thank you for that.
Very. Yes, thanks. Further questions or comments? Move approval of the contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item E two, Consider Approval of Request to Solicit Request for Proposal for Two Separate Projects: Design and Also Printing of the Guide for the remainder of 2016 with an Estimated Cost of fifteen thousand to sixteen thousand dollars.
Commissioners, this is, as the clerk just read, this is two requests. We want to go out for design of our program, what formerly called the Program Brochure that lists all those different activities and facilities that are available to the public, but then also the printing of it, take care of both of those. Again, this is another master plan success. I'd like Mike McLaughlin, our new communications person, who is part of the reorganization, but you're now really starting to see some of the major impact of bringing on a professional to do that. I'd like Mike to come up here, and he can kind of show you some of the, where we've gone in the last two or three years with what is now called the guide. Mike?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We used to refer to the guide as the catalog, and it was just Catalog of Activities, Catalog of Class Listings. It was eighty pages long, which is an information overload, a lot to read, a little bit hard to follow inside, it was all black and white, not necessarily reader-friendly. So, the first issue I came into when I joined in September, we had crowd communications in our agency design, this introduced our new branding. We cut it down to twenty-eight pages, which we thought was a lot more reader-friendly. We also introduced color in the inside to separate out the different portions, sports, adults, youth, dance, et cetera. And then in this latest issue, we got a new designer who's an independent contractor who costs less money. We wanted to go with more of a magazine look and turn the guide into a true guide to tell people how they could enhance their own usage and experience in Parks and Recreation. It's been very successful, had a lot of good comments about it. We've actually had people call us about an article on Ted Enslie Gardens, Secrets in Ted Enslie Gardens, saying, where is the underground room? It's just north of the fountain. It's designed so you don't hear the motor. Dave Bartle's our superintendent of horticulture has degrees in architecture, horticulture, psychology, and public administration, and if you follow his twenty-seven years of developing the gardens, you'll see all of those in the gardens. So, what we're asking is to do the RFP, to let us choose a bid for a designer and bid the printing. We've taken the cost well down from that eighty-page brochure to twenty-eight-page brochure, and we're also proposing going to three times a year next year in seventy-four, which will further save on costs.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Questions? Comments?
The changes have been well noted, and I think they're great changes. It's much more readable, much more enjoyable. I know that, Madam Chair, if I may.
Oh, yes.
When Treasure Ma is out taking pictures at the lake, as he often is, I know that he does framing when he's taking pictures, and Mr. Bartle does a good job making sure those framing elements are put into place from the very beginning. It's great articles. I would move for approval of the request.
Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Cook.
I'll second and say, I like it.
Second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item E three, Consider Approval of a Letter Expressing Support for the Boys and Girls Club of Topeka to Obtain a Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center Grant and to Bring Subsequent Programming to Youth at the Belmackay Parish Community Center.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Knight, Parks and Recreation. Again, I'm a little disappointed that the two principals weren't able to make it this morning, because both of those principals, Alan Hagaman and Chris Holman from the Tupauline Schools, they're both Bethany graduates, and I was hoping that this would be the opportunity that they could restore Bethany's name for college graduates, restore any damage that I've done to them over the last twenty-five years. With that being said, I'd like to have Dawn come up here from the Boys and Girls Club to talk about the partnership that we're trying to get instituted at the Belmackay Parish Community Center. Again, this was another master, master plan-driven project in which Shawnee County Parks and Recreation was running after-school and summer programs there, and also the Boys and Girls run summer programs, and this is an opportunity to then work with the federal government, work for some funding, some national funding, and not duplicate services that are already being provided by another great organization, and hopefully you'll support both of ours' requests to go after. both of ours' requests to go after.
Sean, both of those principals, though, are in support of going forward, correct?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Just wanted to make sure.
Good morning. Dawn McWilliams, Executive Director, Boys and Girls Clubs of Topeka. I do want to preface, I have had extensive meetings with Superintendent Dr. McWilliams, as well as both principals. It was actually one of the principals, once they heard that Twenty-First Century funding was available, that reached out to us and said, "How can we work together?" So there has been a lot of data collection, a lot of research, a lot of discussions, and a lot of meetings regarding the potential to bring Boys and Girls Club South to the Velma Kay Parish Center. The intent of this proposal is to bring a club site location to the Velma Kay Parish Center to meet the needs of kids who are at risk that attend Pauline South and Pauline Central, currently being able to access before, after-school, school-day-out services, half-day, as well as vacation and summer programs. The focus of Twenty-First Century funding is to really focus in on the academic development during out-of-school time to help those kids who are at risk get on track and begin to progress academically successfully, year after year after year, so that when they get into middle school, they're ready. So there's a very heavy academic component. Again, your inquiry as to whether or not the support of the principals in the district exists, they have already stepped forward with a list of in-kind commitments that they are going to provide should this partnership come to fruition, one of those being developing the academic curriculum that will occur before, after, school, during school breaks, as well as the summer, which would be consistent with the standards that they have in the school district themselves. So the kids will get a stronger focus area on those areas that they need assistance in. They have also committed members of their administration, as well as teachers, to the Advisory Council, as well as quality oversight to the programs that are provided, sharing grades. One of the other components, the outcome areas, is to improve state assessment scores for those kids, and so there'll be a lot of communication, and having that partnership is essential as well. There's also a lot of fun components as well, STEM activities, art, math, robotics, as well as healthy lifestyle program that traditionally the Boys and Girls Club is known for, making sure that kids at risk receive all of the other supports that they need. The other component that's very successful with Twenty-First Century funding is the family engagement component, and that's really engaging those families. We've also reached out to Grace Community Church. They are a very strong presence in the Montero area in serving those families on Wednesdays and on Sundays, providing food assistance, but also providing education as well. They also want to be a partner with us. They see the need, they know what this can provide to those children, but also the family engagement component will really help us to work with families to understand the importance of literacy, to understand the importance of children successfully achieving each grade as they progress throughout school, understanding the proponents of what is necessary in order to receive a diploma from high school. There are some Hispanic-speaking families that have little to no English comprehension, working with those families to get them on board as well, but there will be numerous family nights as well regarding the engagement components to make sure that we have the families buy-in, but their involvement because they are a key partner as well.
Sounds like a lot of work, yeah.
Part of today's request is a letter of support from the County Commissioner
Sure.
to the grant application.
Just a little brief overview of the grant. It is Twenty-First Century funding through the Kansas State Department of Education. I want to also assure you that our commitment isn't to go in there without a plan. Twenty-First Century funding is a five-year funding proposal, but we also have to build in a sustainability plan. So obviously, if something happens to that funding, we want to be able to sustain those programs out those, out there as well, so there is a lot of thought process as well as to the continuing services.
Very good. Commissioners? I never had the chance to meet Velma Paris, but I think she would be thrilled of this opportunity, and for those of you who don't know, she was only the second female county commissioner elected. There's only been five elected, so she's, she's pretty special, and so I think she would be pleased. Commissioners, anything we need to do? We just need to approve the, a letter, correct? That's the only thing we have before us today? And then will the grant come back to us, or is that just going?
The grant is due March thirty-first?
Okay.
Of which we will assure you, we will meet that timeframe, and then we will provide copies of that grant to all partners.
Okay, great.
And we will find out, I would say, mid-May, early June, as to who the award recipients will be for that funding, and then funding starts July first.
Okay, great.
I'll move to approve.
Great. Motion by Commissioner Archer.
And I would second, after the success of the Abbott Community Center.
Exactly.
I would more than full-heartedly second the motion through.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. When opposed, motion carries three to zero. Thanks for being here this morning.
Thank you very much. Adam F. Audit Finance, update on revenues and expenditures.
Good morning. Ben Greiner, Director of Administrative Services, here with our February financial update. And we will start out. We'll start out on the revenue side. Our revenue year-to-date through February twenty-ninth is forty-four million, one hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. We had budgeted for that same timeframe of forty-four million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand and eleven dollars. And the majority of this budget variance was from taxes that I reported to you last month. We did not have a tax distribution during the month of February, so these first two categories, the property taxes and the other taxes, have not changed since last month. But this chart kind of shows you the different categories that we received revenue from, and then I'll go into each individual category, and we'll look at the numbers for each. First category is the property tax revenue. That we have received forty million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, sixty-eight dollars, and as I said, that has not changed since January because we didn't have a tax distribution this month. I think it's doing an update here. Okay. We go on to other tax revenue. We received two million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars compared to a budget of two million, forty-six thousand. So there again, right on the close to budget. Okay, property-related fees, we've received two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars compared to a hundred and seventy that I had budgeted, so we are actually over my eighty-four thousand dollars in this category, and that's pretty much all register need fees. So it's good to see that we are having activity in that area. Next is charges for services. We received five hundred and ninety-six thousand compared to a budget of six hundred and ninety-one thousand, so we're actually ninety-four thousand under budget in that category. For the month of February, we are seventy-three thousand under budget. But if you look at it, it's kind of spread between the departments. Parks and Rec is thirty-eight thousand under, Courts is seventeen thousand, Department of Corrections is nineteen thousand. So, you know, in any one department, it's not a large amount, it's just when we, you know, combine them for a total. And then, other revenue, we've received five hundred and forty-one thousand compared to a budget of five hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So there were variance of twenty-seven thousand, so there again, pretty much right on, right on budget for our revenues for the first two months. This just shows a pie chart of the percentages for each. Ninety-one point seven-one percent of our revenue has received, been received from property taxes, and of course, that's because we received the first half of the property taxes in January. So that's why that percentage is, is so high at this point in time. Other taxes are five point one-three percent. Property-related fees are zero point five-eight percent. Charges for services are one point three-five percent, and then miscellaneous revenue is one point two-three percent. Okay, any questions on the revenue side? Okay, we'll go on to the expenditure side. Our total expenditures through the end of February, seventeen million, seventy-six thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars compared to what had budgeted of seventeen million, nine hundred and six thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So we are actually eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand under budget for the first two months, and I'll go through each category, but most of it is a timing issue in most cases. You know, I try to budget based on what we've done in the past, but sometimes there's just a timing difference if something is paid in March rather than February, you know, if I budgeted in February, so. But this kind of shows the different categories and how much is spent in each. The, you can tell, public safety, the blue on the bottom is the largest category, and then above that, we have public health in red, the green is admin services, purple is public works, the blue is Parks and Rec, and then on the top is debt service. We'll start with public safety. We have spent six million, two hundred and eight thousand compared to budget of six million, seven hundred and seventy thousand. So we actually have a positive variance in that of five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars just for the month of February. The positive variance is five hundred and forty-five thousand. So when I really look at the different departments in that, most of that is made up between the Department of Corrections, which was three hundred and sixty-one thousand variance, and then the Sheriff's Office, which is a hundred and forty-six thousand. I did talk to Eve with the Department of Corrections to talk about that variance, and she said one of the things that they are really trying to do is manage their overtime, and they're really seeing some benefit from managing that overtime. Next is the public health expenditures. We have spent two million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars compared to a budget of two million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So there again, right on budget. Admin services, we have spent two million, six hundred and thirteen thousand compared to a budget of two million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand. So we are a hundred and two thousand under budget in that category, and most of that, when I look at it, is timing, there are timing issues on that, and it's pretty much spread throughout the departments. Okay, we're to public works. One million, eight hundred and seven thousand has been spent compared to our budget of two million and eighty-eight thousand, so a two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar variance, positive variance, and there again, timing, especially in public works, timing can vary from year to year when funds are spent. Parks, Rec, and Expo Center, we have spent two million, six hundred and forty-three thousand compared to two million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand. So we have, they are actually over budget by two hundred and five thousand dollars, but I, you know, as we know, we have had a very mild winter and some nice weather, so that is probably what is contributed to that. Okay, and our last category is debt service. We did not have this category last month because our first debt service payments were in February, and we have spent one million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand compared to a budget of one million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand. So we are, have a positive variance of ninety-five thousand dollars. Seventy thousand of that is we had excess funds from prior COPs that the projects were completed, and so there were seventy thousand dollars that we applied to our principal interest, so decreased our costs on that by seventy thousand. So here is our different categories, and, you know, really shows you that public safety is by far the, the category we spend the most on, and debt service is the category we have spent the least on. And then this is the pie chart showing you the percentages. Thirty-six percent of expenditures have been spent on public safety, with public health at fourteen percent, admin services fifteen percent, public works at eleven percent, Parks and Rec at fifteen percent, and debt service at nine percent. Now that debt service at nine percent will continue to go down as we don't have another payment on there until August, so. Any, any questions?
One question, Betty. I know we're still in negotiations with our bargaining units, and so increases to salaries are reflected.
Right now, the only increases that have been implemented are for classified employees.
Okay.
And, and those have been implemented back to the starting date of January ninth.
Okay.
As the bargaining unit agreements are agreed upon and an effective date is agreed upon, then those will be adjustments that'll be made on those individual salaries.
Okay.
So right now, the only additional cost you're seeing is for the classified. Now what we'll also do, if you'll remember last year when we budgeted, we set aside a pool of money that would go towards those, those wage increases.
Right.
What we'll do is we will wait till we have all of the bargaining units and all of that is done, and see how much of that pool goes to each department, and then that will be moved, it will be added to that department's budget to cover those, those costs for that department.
But those are not reflected in those departments yet.
No, no.
Okay, all right. Questions? Commissioner Archer?
Hey, if I may, Madam Chair. I'd like to compliment Betty once again for her professional handling of the budget process last summer, and then reporting to us on a monthly basis. It's, it's just nice, unlike some organizations, not having surprises month after month after month. It is appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Adam G., County Counselor, number one, legislative update?
Good morning Commissioners. Rich Eckert, County Counselor. This is the week of the tax liens hearings, and for the last two days, I've been at the Legislature monitoring those. There are two bills. The Senate one is the one that is the most antagonistic, is probably the right word, to the counties. As you know, the current law that they passed last year, without any hearings at all, causes the tax lid to go into effect in the year twenty-eighteen, and there are at least eight exemptions that at least make it so that we can sort of work with this scheme. Well, off-season, so to speak, the idea was hatched that perhaps we need to eliminate most of those exemptions and move the tax lid up to July one of this year, and that's what the Senate bill does. At the hearings for the proponents of that bill, one of the statistics that they brought up is that once the twenty-eighteenth tax lid was passed last June, thirty counties raised their mill levy by August twenty-fifth. Of course, a lot of us looked at it and thought, "Well, that meant seventy-five counties did not raise their mill levy," but the panic was over the thirty that did. So after the two days of testimony, and then the committee had a chance to talk about it amongst themselves, and only three people talked, and all three of them are very pro-bill, so I think that one's going to move right along and get out to the full Senate rather quickly. On the House side, the House bill is the bill that's being proposed by the League and by KAC, and that one would cause the tax lid not to go into effect until twenty-seventeen, but also in order to force that vote by the citizens, it's actually a citizen drive, and they would have to get a ten percent signature of elected, of people who voted at the last election, governor's election, I believe, to cause that to go to a vote on a mill levy increase. Right now, if you increase the mill levy, there's no citizen petition drive that could force a vote on that. So the proponents, basically the cities and the counties testified on that yesterday, and then later this afternoon, the opponents of that will testify. So anyway, the hope is perhaps the House might put a little interest into the House bill and force a conference with the Senate, and maybe we can water down the Senate bill. That's the hope. But something's going to pass. We can almost just write it down, and certainly moving it up to this year is what we're looking at. The real question is what exemptions can we protect? So that's, that's where we're at on that. On a somewhat related matter, at the end of the opponents to the, to the Senate bill, the one that moves it up immediately, one of the senators launched into a spiel about the appraisal process and how it harmed her husband's building that he owned, and we're looking around because this is not an appraisal bill, the relevance was questionable at best. But if you remember, I talked about this a year ago, they passed a, and turned it into a law, a bill that said that if you win the valuation of your property at the BOTA level, we could not relook at that property again for two years. Johnson County led the fight on that and filed an action in the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court a couple months ago came down and said, "Counties, you're right, that is unconstitutional." The Constitution of the State of Kansas requires that all property be appraised in a fair and uniform fashion." Those are the key words, "fair" and "uniform." And when you sit on your thumbs for two years on a property, it causes its valuation not to be uniform with similar properties that perhaps did not appeal the process. In response to that Supreme Court ruling, a new bill came out of nowhere two weeks ago and then immediately had a hearing. ago and then immediately had a hearing. It does a lot of things, and a lot of things that it does is it increases the burden on the county to win at BOTA. It makes it very difficult, and it makes it incredibly difficult to appeal if we lose. But the main change with the bill has been that instead of valuing property every January 1, which is what we do now and what we've always done, and it's been the history of the appraisal process, is that you appraise the properties every January 1, now you're going to skip a year. We're going to appraise in 2017, 2019, 2021, and it locks in all property's values for two years. Obviously, it has the same constitutional issues that the last bill had, but I think that this bill has a lot of steam because a lot of the other things that it does, making it hard for counties to value properties. So we expect action on that bill to move forward quite quickly. So, in the good news column, I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. Archer, here. So values would just roll over for the year?
They would roll over, yeah, in those odd years, or even years.
Okay. There was information in the paper this morning about the Turnpike Authority, and I see the treasurer here. Did you want to mention that?
Well, that's probably, he would have, well, he's, so.
Yeah, I saw it pass by one vote, I think.
I have a phone up here, just in case it goes off. Is somebody's phone? All right, thank you. I had planned on talking about this in administrative communication, but this is a good time. Rich is correct. It passed by one vote, sixty-three votes, that's the minimum. Actually, it failed initially, sixty-one, sixty-one, and then through parliamentary procedure, they brought it back and probably twisted a few arms and got the two votes they needed. A few thoughts on this. We were very, very close to defeating this bill. I want to express my appreciation to the Capital Journal. They did a marvelous job. I didn't expect to be on the front page, but so be it. I think that's why we got so close, because they got the word out. I testified, I was the sole person to testify against this. KCTA, Kansas County Treasurer Association, was the only group that opposed this bill, which was kind of disappointing to me, because it became obvious that most people thought this was just a food fight between the Treasurer's Office and the Turnpike Authority. And while we did not like the idea that we were going to frustrate our customers by not allowing them to register their vehicle, and don't get me wrong, we already have a thousand ways to do that, this is just one of a thousand. We kind of missed the whole there, I think, and I thought the Capital Journal did a good job of trying to bring this out. The real, the real problem was this roadblock in the collection of taxes, that we were not going to collect taxes in favor of collecting bills for the Kansas Turnpike Authority. That's not a food fight between the Treasurer's Office and the Turnpike Authority, that's a food fight between the people who are going to receive those tax dollars and the Turnpike Authority. So if we think it's smarter to collect fees for the Turnpike Authority than to collect fees that are going to go to our schools locally and to our local governments, so be it. But I was kind of disappointed that other groups did not step up. I don't have any problem saying I won't take money, but you know, that's what it is. So that now goes to the Senate. We still have a chance to defeat that in the Senate, much harder to do, because once it passes one of the Houses, it can be attached to any bill, whether it's related or not, and get through as an amendment to a bill that's totally unrelated that everybody likes. So a very, very difficult opportunity to stop that in the Senate, that we were so close in the, in the House. Now, having said that, there's nothing like success to breed more copycat. So last night, I was informed that there is a new House bill, House Bill 2727. It's got a little new twist on it. Anyone who owes, this bill proposes that anyone who owes child support will not be able to register their vehicles. Again, this is not another way to frustrate our customers so they can't register their vehicles. This is another way to avoid collecting taxes. So I think if we keep doing this, we'll soon be only collecting taxes from those who can show that they are squeaky clean and have attended church last Sunday. So that I won't be, so I won't be misquoted in the newspaper. That was sarcasm. But you can, you can see where we're headed here, while it's, you know, it's a good idea for the Turnpike Authority, it's a better idea for those who owe child support and who knows what will come down next. My point being is, we do not need to roadblock the collection of taxes. We do need to go after thieves who run toll gates. We do need to go after people who don't pay for child support. I understand that. But refusing to take tax receipts seems to be somewhat of a self-defeating purpose to me. So having said that, I'll answer any questions you have, and again, that was sarcasm. Please do not put on the front page.
All right, thank you. I don't have any questions, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich, did you, you didn't have anything else, did you?
No, I didn't, although I'm sitting next to Brian Cole, and he actually whispered this to me. The more, the harder that you cause it to get your vehicle tags, people won't stop driving. They will start driving illegally, and that's going to have an effect upon our jail, it will have an effect upon the municipal system, the county system, in terms of how they prosecute those crimes. So I don't think it's ever wise to add that, to make a hindrance to getting a tag or a driver's license or any of those things, because people will not stop driving. They have to drive to go to work. It's just going to cause them to be, live on another ledge of legality. So I, I just don't like the way that's headed.
Yeah.
I have to have the last word on this, Rich. Typically, people who are in that kind of situation are financially strapped, and I can almost guarantee you, they will come in on the last day that they possibly can, which means probably on a Friday, and we will force them to drive over the weekend with high probability of getting a ticket. So what we've now done is caused them to have even more financial problems, you know. So it just starts to build on itself, and Rich made a very good point that I should have made, that all you're doing is digging the hole deeper for those folks, and we haven't solved the problem, and we don't have our tax money. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Item H, Commission, number one, consider reappointment of Larry Wilson to the Community Action Board and reflect reappointment of Lea Martin by Commissioner Cook, Linda Jeffrey by Commissioner Beeler, and Lynn Gentine by Commissioner Archer.
Commissioners, are there any changes? I'll move to, for the reappointment and additionally reflect the reappointments of those mentioned.
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Beeler, second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor, say aye. One opposed, motion carries three to zero. And we appreciate them serving, as always.
Item five, Administrative Communications.
Administrative Communications from, okay.
Good morning. Jeff Shabon, Kansas Expo Center. Just want to invite everyone down for our five A state basketball championships, and I understand our local team won last night, so that's very good. It was also exciting with the bands playing and the buzzers going off while negotiating for some shows, so showed how activity is going on. Also excited for the Topeka Home Show, being a brand-new homeowner this weekend, starting tomorrow, as well as the Hunter and Jumper's Horse Show. So another busy weekend at the Expo Center.
Great, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Administrative Communication?
We would just like to announce the next Board of Health meeting is on March 24th, and that will be held after the meeting here in the Commission Chambers. Some of the items that we're going to be talking about are the release of the county health rankings, and that'll be on March 6th. And the county health rankings basically compare all the counties in Kansas to each other based on their health outcomes. We'll also be talking about our community health needs assessment, and we'll be doing an update on the new local health department facility. So we'd like to invite anybody to come in person or to watch it on the stream.
Great, thank you. Anyone else, Commissioners?
Quickly, if I may, Madam Chair. First of all, I wanted to thank Greg Winkler and the new credit union organization, Azura, for their sponsorship up in Skyline Park. We had a great day yesterday. The weather was nice and the vista was beautiful. Many of my friends and neighbors have asked me if I plan to run for reelection this year, and the answer is yes. It has been an honor to serve the constituents of the Third District, and quite simply, I want to continue that service. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Just briefly, there was a lot going on, as I said, Monday. Attended a Boy Scout breakfast at seven AM, went to the Keep America Beautiful Volunteer Luncheon, and Shawnee County won a number of awards there. And then also went to the ABWA Luncheon yesterday, and they honored Dr. Grace Morrison. So just a lot of good things happening in this community, so just wanted to point that out. Next item, please.
Item six, Executive Session.
There is a need for an executive session not to exceed thirty minutes for purposes matters involving non-elected personnel, matters involving employer-employee negotiations, and also consultation with the attorney. And that is a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor, say aye. One opposed, motion carries three to zero, thirty minutes. When opposed, motion carries three to zero, 30 minutes.